Full house tonight, so we're just gonna kind of jump right in and get going. So first item on the agenda is call to order. Roll call.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser.
Here.
Counselor Parrish.
Here.
Counselor Downs.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Present.
Great, thank you. I will ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh huh, it's so cute.
Very nice. All right, we have an agenda set forth before us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to note for the record that there was an error in the cover sheet for the Arts and Culture Board appointments in that there are no remaining vacancies if they are appointed.
Thank you. With that, need a motion? To adopt.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay.
All right, we have a first and a second. Deb, would you kindly poll council?
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you. We have one public presentation proclamation tonight, or it's presentation, and these are always the fun ones, which is at the first of every month during the school year, we recognize a school, and then that school then recognizes some special students. So it's always a lot of fun. It's great to see so many people here with families. So with that, I'm gonna ask, hopefully you're aware of this, that you're gonna have to say a few words. Okay, good. I just want to make sure now that we've done this once. All right, I'm gonna ask that Principal Emily Larson with Monument Ridge, please come up and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Larson, and I am the proud principal of Monument Ridge Elementary School. Today, I brought with me our student council officers. Each August, students in the fifth grade have the opportunity to create a video to present to their peers in order to be elected to one of these offices. The ladies that I brought with me today created those videos and were elected by their peers at Monument Ridge to serve in the following offices. Presley Richards is our president. Aubrey Blackburn is our historian. Rosalyn McIntosh is our secretary, and Reagan Reyes is our treasurer. I met with the girls and asked them what kinds of things they wanted me to highlight. And the first thing that Reagan said was, I want you to highlight how this is a great leadership opportunity for us. And I couldn't agree more. They have helped lead our school to the fifth straight year in earning the most points in the Burton Orthodontic Take a Bite Out of Hunger food drive that benefits the Salvation Army. They, we were also awarded a $1,000 check from Burton Orthodontics for earning the most points in that food drive. They help by running our school store, our mountain lion assemblies. They help organize our mountain lion monitors to help keep students safe. They head up our recycling program. They participate in yearbook. They also do Friday sales to help earn some extra money. And they generally can participate in a community outreach each spring. They are very busy. I have a very hard time sometimes keeping up with everything that the student council is doing. I'm really excited to see what these young ladies do as they move forward into middle school, but I am certain that leadership will be part of their life moving forward. So thank you for having us this evening.
Great, thank you. Don't go too far, because I'm gonna ask some of our fellow council members to call them up one at a time. And we have a plaque for you, we have a button, and we have a day pass. So if you guys can call them one up at a time, then we'll all come up and time for photos. So James.
There you go.
Yeah, why don't you start off?
So the one that I have, I gotta ask you, now, now I know why she shows up to guitar never ready, because you have her extremely busy. This is going for Reagan Reyes.
Don't, yeah, don't go too far. Rosalyn McIntosh, if you can come up.
Presley Richards.
And last, someone who has bears the same last name as my wife did in younger years, Aubrey Blackburn.
Oh, good. Don't go, you're not leaving yet. You gotta do a photo, and I want to figure out how you stop time to go to class with everything you do.
Yeah, very cool.
It goes. All right. So that's almost always so much fun. Thank you, guys. So next up, we have public participation. And this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda or that are on the consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. As a reminder for council, if there's something on the agenda, consent agenda, we can always pull it off. I know we have a fairly large house today. I want to make sure everybody knows that everybody will have the opportunity to speak. We ask that when you come up that we, everybody has three minutes, but please start by giving your full name and address. I also ask that this is a time for us to listen. So that I'm gonna ask that we don't, there's no applause, no cheering or sign holding or anything like that, which is just so everybody can hear and we are respectful. So with that, I'd like to open up. Is there anybody that would like to speak on something that's on the consent agenda? Or something, or anything else? Come on up, and once again, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Greg Bolton. I live east of Fruta on 1877 J and 6th 10th Road. I stand before you not just as a resident of Fruta, but as an inspiring farmer, steward of the land, and a father who hopes to pass on a legacy that is quickly slipping away. Fruta was built on the backs of farmers, people who worked this land, who fed their neighbors, and who shaped the identity of this town. And agriculture isn't just a part of our past. It is woven into the fabric of who we are. And for generations, the orchards, pastures, and fields that surround us have done more than just produce food. They have sustained families, their businesses, and a way of life that is now under threat. My family and I are working towards a future in farming. It's in my DNA. It's the dream I wake up thinking about and the responsibility I feel every time I walk our land. I want my child to grow up knowing the smell of the soil, the rhythm of the seasons, and the satisfaction of feeding a community. But with every acre lost to expansion, every foot, every inch, that dream becomes harder to hold on to. And once farmland is gone, it is gone forever. We cannot build it back, and we cannot replace generations of knowledge, hard work, sustainability with concrete and asphalt. And if we continue down this path, my child and every child who might have wanted to farm will be left with nothing but memories of what Fruta used to be. The actions of the city of Fruta and its partnerships with developers do not align with the values of this community. So I ask who benefits from these projects and who stands to gain from the money being exchanged here, because it is not the residents. The people of this community do not support what you are doing, so when will you listen? Your decisions are affecting real lives, real livelihoods, and the overall well-being of the people you were elected to serve. You are causing undue stress, anxiety, and a genuine fear for the future. And you are doing it with a brazen lack of transparency, fostering deep distrust amongst your own community members. We will not sit idly by while you dismiss residents fighting to protect their private property rights as spreading misinformation. The real misinformation is coming from this council and the false claims that this expansion is necessary for road safety and school growth, and that farmers will be unaffected by the right-of-way acquisition of their own land. And these justifications are misleading and at best, and deceptive at worst. And this decision is not just about a road, it's about what kind of town we want to be. Do we want to be yet another place that sacrificed its agricultural roots for unchecked expansion? Or do we want to be a community that values the land, protects its farmers, and ensures future generations have the opportunity to grow, harvest, and sustain themselves right here in Fruta? I urge you, before moving forward with this expansion and future thoughts of expansion, consider the irreversible impact on the families who have built their lives around this land. There are other solutions, better ways to grow, and smarter ways to plan. Fruta does not have to sacrifice its agricultural heritage to move forward. We are watching, we are organizing, and we aren't going anywhere.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come up and speak?
Hi. I'm Peggy Griffith. I actually live in Grand Junction right now, but my family settled Fruta before it became a city. My great-grandfather were Joseph Hillman Dally and Maggie Palick Dally. And they settled Fruta before William Paper actually got the status of Fruta, uh, city, sorry. My grandfather, Joseph Dally, had a massive heart attack and died in 1967 after the city of Fruta forced him to sell his ancestral home using eminent domain to build a bridge next to City Market. Now, that was a legitimate use of eminent domain, but it still affected my family desperately. They also used eminent domain to take my mother's property, which was adjacent to my grandparents' house, and ended up building a Circle K there eventually, which was not legally permissive under And now there's a Walgreens there. Federal eminent domain laws require that the use of eminent domain be for the true public uses such as roads, bridges, parks, and public bridges and facilities. I was born and raised in Fruta. My grandpa, my mom, all of my aunts and uncles, cousins and siblings were born and raised in Fruta, and most still live in the area. That's why I'm here today. I'm representing the rest of my family. I looked at your bios online, and most of you state that you love living in Fruta because of the trails, small-town feeling, and open sky. Nancy said that. Okay. And that seeing the needs and desires of our growing population and the importance of personal property rights was a big concern. Amy Miller said that. Okay. As council members, your responsibility is to serve the best interest of this community. Beddo's Farm has been there for as long as I can remember. The history of this town is quickly being destroyed. These developers here and knock down historical houses only to replace them with ugly boxy houses with corrugated roofs, metal roofs to be used as Airbnbs, et cetera, is disheartening. All you see is an increase in tax monies while the rest of Fruta is disappearing. It's sad and it's disgusting to sell us out for a buck. Progress is a good thing when a town's history and character are considered before jumping in to make these changes. But bulldozing out flavor of the town destroys all the things that people love about this community and the very things that draw people to the area.
I ask that you finish your thoughts, please.
That's pretty much it. I do want you to consider that there has been a lot of this kind of growth in Loma. And one of the repercussions of all of the building in Loma near these farms, these that have been there for centuries, okay, is that these people that move into these new houses and maybe
I ask that you please wrap it up.
Yeah, okay. Well, you're getting a lot of complaints from people that are now living next to farms that have never experienced the sounds and the smells. If there's more to consider here.
Thank you, Peggy.
My name is Candy Armstrong. I live on J and 6th 10th Road, 1870 J and 6th 10th Road. You want to make the road with two sidewalks on each side, a bike lanes on each side, a merge lane on the way down from 19 Road to K Road and Highway 50. This is excessive for 19 Road because most of it's ag. Most likely, these people will go on Highway 6 and 50 and not down 19 Road. And on K Road and 19, people where they sold will most likely go down K Road to Fruta or Grand Junction. There are already bike lanes there and most sides on both sides and hardly are being used. Pine Street is exactly how you guys want to make 19 Road with merge lanes, two sidewalks, two bike lanes. People pass drivers on the merged lanes and seem to be a waste of money and time, and it really doesn't seem to help anyone. 19 Road already has major speeders. Colorado is a fence-out state, meaning that if livestock get out, the people, the person who hits them are liable to pay the farmer for hitting the livestock, and 19 Road is still a county road. So why are we making it easier for people to pass in merge lanes? There are more bike riders and runners that ride in the country to get away from sidewalks, people, and cars. Aren't you defeating the purpose, making it more accessible for people to speed? On top of that, runners don't like sidewalks. Makes sense to put like one to two bike lanes in, and you have the land already to do that without taking everybody's land, and everybody will be happy. I think it would be better to put in the sidewalks going down Highway 50 that meets up to the other sidewalk, and then sidewalks that go to the schools. That's gonna protect your kids. On top of that, some people who are affected by the eminent domain are saying that they're taking 10 feet, while others are saying 20-plus feet. There's no real definitive answer. If you draw a line all the way down on both sides, it's going to be, it basically puts everybody, the line in the front doors. Is this really safe for people to live in? There is also not a written document that says that the land will be protected so they can keep the amount of animals without breaking the law. Other issues farmers and ranchers are selling out because they ain't getting enough help and can't afford to pay people to get help to get the product off the land. And it's just gonna get more inflation, and our food is just gonna get more. Instead of helping people have homes that aren't really affordable, why don't you help the farmers afford their farms to feed our people? The reason people move to Fruta is to get out of the city. So why are we making it into Clifton, California? On top of that, there is proof that the school district is decreasing in numbers and that the sidewalks and everything else, is that really gonna be
Thank you, Candy.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Amanda Alvalice, and I live in Windsor Park, here in Fruta, where our relationship, or our leadership repeatedly ignores us when we ask, "Lead." To please leave family farms alone. I'm not here to ask for sympathy because it's become painfully clear that you guys don't really care. Let's talk about eminent domain, where the government takes your land for the public good. Just not your public or your good. For those who think it's not being used here, let me correct you, it is. And this council, despite its claims of transparency, has kept this community in the dark until appraisers' letters showed up unannounced and unexpected. You say we need to widen 19 Road for safety. In four years, there have been exactly four this many accidents, all at the Highway 6 and 50 intersection. The issue isn't the road. It's the drivers. Yet your solution is to bulldoze farmland, disrupt irrigation, and displace local businesses like The Shabby Moose, offer more tax and sewer revenue. It's always all about the money, isn't it? And that 90% support claim you guys wave around? Over 1,800 people and counting have signed a petition against this expansion. If 90% truly supported it, you wouldn't need eminent domain. You'd be organizing a ribbon-cutting ceremony with giant scissors. As for the justification of future school growth, District 51 is projected to lose over 2,300 students by 2030. Are we widening roads for tumbleweeds to cross safely? Because at this rate, that's the only traffic we're gonna have. You say you support farmers while holding an eminent domain letter in one hand and a developer's check in the other. That's not support, that's betrayal. Your so-called transparency, secret land annexations, sudden reclassifications, farmers learning their land seizures through appraisers rather than a public notice, that's not transparency, that's cowardice cloaked in bureaucracy. So let me be transparent with you. Take your pretend safety concerns, your cozy relationship with your developers, and your underhanded land grabs and reconsider your actions. Fruta deserves better, our farmers deserve better, we demand better. Thanks.
Thank you, Amanda.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lee Maderas. I live at 1087 19 Road. I'm way down this road, like stage 27 or whatever you got going on here. Anyway, my biggest problem is, has everybody seen this picture? Okay, look at this dark side over here. What does that look like? That looks like LA County which just burned to the ground. And this is just part of it. So here you want to put all these houses on K Road, down 19 Road. I mean, I'm thinking of a safety here. I mean, you're just packing them in there. The place below me is 14 acres. They want to put 70 houses on there. Rick Beddow lives down, further down towards the highway. There's houses there. They're, shoot, you might be able to get a 22-inch lawnmower between the two houses, the fences. It's ridiculous. Ridiculous. So then, you want to eminent domain everything, which is government's privilege. Heck with us. And when you do this, what benefit do I have? None. You'll come and buy my property for so much a square foot, dirt cheap. Rick Beddow, that subdivision, I'd like to know what one of those lots go for, okay? Don't figure anything there but just the ground. What are they paying per square foot? They're definitely not paying what you're gonna pay me. So if they're getting $5,000 a square foot, why am I not getting $5,000 a square foot? My ground's just as good as theirs. But like I say, I don't know what the prices are, but I know I'm definitely getting my throat cut here. Then you talk about safety and your sidewalks and your bicycles. I've lived on that road for 30 years. Once in a great while, you'll see a pedestrian walking 19 Road. Once in a great while. Bicycles, the college kids go by there once in a while when they're out riding. I mean, it's not like, you know, every day there's bicycles or pedestrians. So your sidewalks and your bike lanes are a waste as far as I'm concerned. You know, when I could, the schools are there, I can understand safety and all that, but this is not the way to do it. It's not the way to do it. You know, it's just ridiculous. And like I say, look at that burnt scar right there. That's where we're headed. Cause our day will come.
Thank you, Lee. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak on anything that's on the consent agenda or anything else?
Hello. My name is Amanda Quigley. I live over in that Cottonwood subdivision. I have a recommendation. I don't want to talk about 19 Road. I have a separate recommendation as far as drainage goes. So I found that Fruta published a stormwater management plan, SWMMP, in 1998. This document identifies five areas to include the Little Softwash, Northwest Fruta, Downtown Fruta, Southwest Fruta, and quote, east of 18 to 20 Road, unquote. This last area was only briefly discussed in 1998, but is now the fastest-growing region in Fruta. This document, the SWMMP, matches a Mesa County document created at about the same time called the Storm Water Management Manual, SWM. So a copy of the SWMMP published by the city of Fruta is available from the city of Fruta, and I'm ascertaining if a copy of the 1998-ish SWMM is still available. After 1998, Fruta then entered into the 521 Drainage Authority in 2004, which was a collaborative effort between Mesa County, Fruta, Grand Junction, Palisade, and the Grand Valley Drainage District. The 521 Drainage Authority dissolved in 2020, and I am not aware of a drainage assessment being completed by the city of Fruta since that date. I'm also not aware of a current drainage criteria manual published by the city of Fruta. I am of the humble opinion that drainage, including stormwater irrigation till or return flow and seepage should be as much of a concern as traffic circulation and should be given as much importance in core service delivery, strategic planning, and the inclusion in four-year strategic plans and 10-year comprehensive plans. So I am recommending that we define drainage as a core service delivery in the 10-year comprehensive plan, or at least dedicate an entire chapter to the plan for drainage, similar to traffic in parks. I would like to define drainage as a core service delivery in the four-year strategic plan. I would like to identify drainage as a goal in the city council strategic plan. And I think that this would start by hiring an external consultant to complete a drainage assessment on current drainage systems within the city of Fruta and the areas in Mesa County identified as future growth areas for Fruta. This will identify problems in need of improved infrastructure, assess current drainage capabilities, and forecast future capabilities as Fruta expands and grows. I believe that the Grand Valley Drainage District should participate in the discussion, though I believe that the study should be done by a disinterested third party to ensure accuracy in reporting. From there, I think that the data collected from the drainage assessment should create an active drainage plan similar to the Active Circulation Plan for Suits and Trail. And then from there, I think that we should create a drainage criteria manual to
Thank you, Amanda.
Hey, the lady's smart. I live on 255 North Ash Street.
We need full name and address.
Sorry. Tessa Bynum, 255 North Ash Street. That lady's really smart. I like what she said. That's not what I'm here for. I want to start out by thanking James for voting no last week, or last meeting. I thought that that was really great, and I appreciate what you said. I also want to acknowledge and thank Matthew for standing up for what I said and what I mentioned when talking about the city code that was being brought up, even though I wasn't here. That meant a lot to me, so I appreciate and I think both of you. I have two points to make, so I'm gonna make them pretty quick. But when looking at the model traffic code in Section 1205, I would respectfully like you both, or ask all of you to check your privilege. And I'm really loud, I'm so sorry. When was the last time that you lived in an apartment complex? Because you can't work on a car or wash a car in any of them that I know of. In addition to that, the Aspen Residence that is currently being built, they are giving each unit 0.95% of a parking space, except for two bedrooms. They get one and a quarter parking spaces. And in the mews, the studios and one-bedroom units get half a parking space. And the two bedrooms get three-quarters of a parking space. The three bedrooms get one and a quarter parking spaces. In Geode Flats, the market value units get 1.32 parking spaces, and the affordable housing units get 0.75. I could go on, but my point should be clear by now. You're saying that people can't wash their cars or work on their cars in the street, but you're not giving them parking spaces either. So not everyone has the privilege of living in a house with a driveway or a parking spot of their own. So I would really like you guys to consider that. Also, I don't like Section 108 either, but there's still flaws in that, but I do like the adjustments. I really appreciate you guys working on what I said the first time. I also hope that you take into consideration that the I also hope that you take into consideration that the sidewalks are in awful condition and that it's not just that people are wanting to be obstructing traffic when they're in the roads. Sometimes it is because sidewalks are an ADA compliant, or not ADA compliant. So I would really like that to be considered. Thank you.
Good, Tessa.
Hello, mayors and council members. I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing in the back, so I'm gonna adjust this. My name's AJ Armstrong, or Andrew Armstrong. I live at eighteen seventy J and six tenths road. You know, we're talking about the road expansions and stuff, and I can recall over about the past three years, our tail ditch drains into, somewhere in the Red Rock subdivision there. And throughout the time, they had repaired a pipe or altered a pipe underneath the road that feeds those subdivisions off of our tailwater. The pipe that was put in was either much smaller or altered in a way that flow is not sufficient. So our drainage tail ditches tend to back up a lot. And now we're talking with these road expansions that you guys are proposing every one of our tail ditches or supply ditches would have to be altered or buried or something. With that being said, eventually it's gonna come to a point where we feel as residents that our water is gonna be choked off because we have nowhere to drain it. And now we become farmers that have nothing to farm. You know, and that's a huge worry that we as farmers have, that we as citizens have, that probably most of you that live in a subdivision that depend on irrigation water should have, okay? And we've been fighting water backups ever since that project. I know, I'm not pointing anybody out by any means, but I know the City of Fruta had a hand in it. Their trucks were out there repairing it across the road. I knew the flagger really well, very neat gal, very respectable. I do appreciate the effort that was put into that job by the workers and everything. Whoever did the engineering should probably maybe be reconsidered for the next project in my mind. But here again, I'm not slander. I just, I'm noticing things like that. And with us having a threat to a small percent of our land could imminently make a huge impact on what the outcome would be of that, just with our tail ditches alone, among the many other things. So thank you for your time. Thank you for hearing me. Have a blessed night.
Andrew.
My name's Brandon Elwes, Windsor Park subdivision. Mayor, esteemed city council members, and fellow citizens of Fruta. Fruta's agricultural land is more than just a space on a map. It is the foundation of our community's identity, economy, and way of life. The families who farm here aren't just growing crops. They are preserving a legacy, one that has sustained this town for generations. Today, that legacy is at risk. The proposed expansion of nineteen road places undue pressure on private landowners who have chosen to hold on to their farms despite growing development all around them. These farmers are receiving letters urging them to sell, with the implication that if they don't, the city may take the land anyway. I noticed this at the last council meeting where you guys described a pathway of that leads to eminent domain. What was interesting to me on that was that there was no pathway to not acquiring that land. You describe all these steps, and at the end of every pathway you displayed shows that you end up acquiring that land, albeit paid for. It's still taking the land that they didn't want to sell in the first place. It's not just about infrastructure. It's about fundamental property rights. The right to decide what happens to your land should never be compromised by government pressure or looming threat of eminent domain. Growth is necessary and infrastructure matters, but the way we approach it matters just as much. The families who steward this land deserve respect, not coercion. There are ways to expand responsibly, working with landowners rather than against them, ignoring their voices in favor of unchecked development that is not only short-sighted, it risks undermining the very characteristic of Fruta. I ask you to consider the long-term impact of these decisions. Once farmland is gone, it does not return. And once we set a precedent that private property can be taken for development, it becomes easier to do it again. It's a slippery slope. Let's find solutions that respect both progress and preservation, ensuring that Fruta's future reflects the values that have made this community strong. Council members, you have a very powerful position. You have the ability to stop these things when they're not in the public interest and not in the interest of citizens of Fruta. Something, again, I'm glad that was brought up a few minutes ago, was the traffic code. Something I saw during that council meeting, as you are passing it almost unanimously, someone said, "I don't want to be the only guy that holds this up." That sinking. "I don't want to be the only guy that holds this up. That's not what the purpose of these meetings are for." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? So once we close this, it will be closed.
Good evening, council members. My name is Paul Schultz from the Red Rock subdivision. I am a proud supporter of savefrutofarms.org, representing over eighteen hundred voices who are here to tell you one thing. Stop the unjust and improper actions that are threatening Fruta Farms and landowners. Fruta is using incorrect and inflated road classifications to justify taking private property through eminent domain. You falsely and properly claim nineteen road's a major arterial, even though it is clearly, according to CDOT's official designation, a minor collector road. There is no traffic crisis. There is no safety justification. There is no need of road expansion for the schools. And CDOT has only requested improvements at Highway six and fifty intersection. There is simply no justification for taking family farms through eminent domain, but you're doing it anyway, for speculative future growth, not for public necessity. City of Fruta is forcing out family farms for more tax, property tax, and sewer revenue at the expense of family farms. The way you've handled this is shameful. There have been secret annexations where affected property owners weren't properly notified. Instead of engaging directly with landowners whose lives are disrupting, you've allowed them to find out about annexations and land acquisitions from third-party appraisers or after you have come for our private property. That's not transparency, that's deception. Your handling of the right-of-way acquisition process is just as questionable. You issued an RFP and quietly reissued another one when problems surfaced. And even though you know exactly which properties you're targeting, you haven't informed, informed, sorry, all of the affected landowners. This isn't how a responsible government works. We're here because this is bigger than just one road. This is about preserving Fruta's identity, its family farms, and the property rights east of Fruta. You're sacrificing farmland and local livelihoods for development that the community clearly does not support. We proposed Fruta's unneeded nineteen road expansion, and we're here tonight to say, "Stop." We demand that you halt the right-of-way acquisitions, suspend eminent domain actions, and engage in open, transparent discussions with landowners and the community members who are being impacted. Fruta, Fruta's future isn't just about development. It's about people who live and work here. Protect them, protect our farms, protect what makes Fruta a place worth calling home. If you don't listen now, we'll make sure our voices are heard at the ballot box. But tonight, you have a chance to do what's right before irreversible damage to Fruta's farms, its people, and its future becomes irreversible. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anybody else that would like to come? Okay, great. Do we, would it be easier if we give you a microphone handheld? I think we have a handheld, would that be easier for you?
Yeah, come on in here. My name is Debbie Newman. I live on seventeen and a half road. And when I saw you guys putting in the car-running-over information that you guys do to count cars on nineteen road, and then again on, what was that? J and two tenths and J and six tenths? I knew you had something up your sleeve. Didn't know what it was, but I knew you had something up your sleeve. I've seen that before, and I know I'll see it again. Not that I like it, but that's okay. My problem is, I live on seventeen and a half road, and my road is busier because of the bicycles. The subdivisions that are down the road from me, the eighteen road, where they drive their motorhomes, their whatever, out to set to eighteen road to ride their bikes and to ride their motor, or their motorbikes. You can't even get on my road half the time to even go to town. It's so damn dumb that you're doing J and six tenths road, even though there's a school there. I don't see any kids riding their bike. I don't see any kids walking. There's no subdivisions that direction. And I'll be damned if they should be walking that street in the first place. That's not a street to be putting a sidewalk, let alone a bigger street. I find that nineteen road, I don't see you, there's people gonna be riding their bikes or even walking down that road. Not unless you guys get really, really big and do the wrong roads, which I think seventeen and a half road should be fixed with the church being there, out there in the Catholic church. And that busy road with the cars going down like crazy and the bicycles, they don't stay in a lane like a vehicle. They take up the whole damn lane, and we have to try to go around them. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right at all. I think you need to second-guess what roads you guys need to work on. And J and six tenths road, or two tenths, is not that road. We need to leave our farms, even if they're little bitty. I don't care, leave them alone. Fix the roads that needs to be fixed. And yes, there are sidewalks in this Fruta area that needs to be fixed for me. Not just for me, but my point is, they need to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else that would like to, please, sir, come on up?
Good evening, council folks. My name's Kent Strott. I live eighteen eighty-five J and six tenths, right in the middle of the area in question that we're talking about. Now, we've been there for, oh, forty-five years. In all that time, nobody has ever taken a second to even talk to me, discuss anything, mention anything about what we might want to do, need to do, do we need this, do you want that? Oh, well, I don't have a big list of things. Everything's pretty much been covered by everybody I've heard. But I can say one thing for the landowners that live on J and six tenths road in particular. You really need to downscale this thing. We don't need this beam of coming up our road. We have no subdivisions. We're not leaving. Do me a big favor. Take a look elsewhere. Leave us alone.
You can't. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak at this time? We're here at this point in time only to listen. Now, that is part of our administrative agenda. You're talking about the traffic code?
Housing authority.
Oh, housing authority.
Yes, during the public hearings of the housing authority, there will be public comment.
Anybody else who wish to speak at this time? Okay. We've already had, everybody gets one turn at speaking. All right, last chance. Seeing none, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close participation. I do want to thank everybody that did come up and speak. And I also want to thank you for being respectful of everybody that was here. So once again, thank you very much for that. So with that, closing the public participation and moving to consent agenda, to bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on consent agenda?
I just have a quick question on the, on resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight. Do we have any plans to communicate that grant being awarded and how it's gonna, that whole project's gonna go into affecting our community as well as the valley?
Yeah, absolutely, regarding the Safe Routes to School grant.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Pardon me, one second. I asked that if there's any, excuse me. I ask if there's any side conversation. I don't want to stop it. I'm just gonna ask that if you kindly step outside so we can continue the meeting. So, I'm sorry, Aaron.
I just, can you repeat that again, Shannon?
Yeah, regarding the Safe Routes to School grant. Yeah, so we do have our Public Works Director, Kimberly Bolin, online as well. But this is part of a broader regional approach through the Regional Transportation Planning Office, where they came and presented to the city council back in December on the new Mesa County Safety Action Plan. So with that Safe Routes to School grant, there's a variety of different things that the regional partnership receives. But most notably for us, we get some speed feedback signs and some also messaging and safety tools as well. So it's gonna be a great project. Council actually adopted a letter of support for the Mesa County Safety Action Plan, so now we can begin implementing it from here on out. And Kimberly, was there anything you wanted to add specifically to that?
No, I think you, I think you've said everything there is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, anything else on consent? Or a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items.
We have a first and a second. Any additional conversation? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you kindly call council?
Counselor Hancy.
Yes.
Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
I would like to actually apologize real fast, and I know some of you are still here. Shannon, I should have asked you, and once again, I apologize to everybody that's here.
Sure.
There was a lot of questions and comments clearly about nineteen road.
Sure.
And just for the record, could you kindly state where people can find more information as well as who they may want to talk to?
Yeah, we have a ton of information on our website, fruta.org/nineteenroad, and also fruta.org/growth as well, has information regarding the project, frequently asked questions, you know, our traffic circulation master plan, kind of everything of interest to this specific project.
Once again, I apologize for not bringing that up sooner. Will you approve consent?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. With that, I would like to acknowledge a couple people who have stepped up and have volunteered to serve on some boards. Kevin Lynch has been appointed to the Historic Preservation Board for a three-year term. Looking forward to that. And also Elliot Raymidge, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly. Raymidge?
Raymidge.
Okay. To the Arts and Culture Board, also for a three-year term. That expires in February of 2028. But I do want to acknowledge those people and thank them for stepping up.
Amber Asukura.
Yes, thank you. Amber Asukura, Asukura as well.
You're doing great.
Yeah, all right. No sugar either, all right. But thank you. All right. With that, we have nothing on the public hearing. So with that, we are going to go ahead and move into the Fruta Housing Authority meeting. So just to be clear, do we need, we need a motion to go into that?
Yeah.
So I will need a motion to go into the Housing Authority meeting.
I move, okay, yes. Second.
We have a first and a second. Deb, would you kindly call council?
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish. Counselor Downs.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hancy.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Very much. With that, we are moving- Very much. With that, we are moving into the Housing Authority and I'm trying to find my notes. Uh, on this real fast, so I apologize. Um, we have two items on the agenda. First item is Resolution, um, FHA twenty twenty-five dash oh one, amending the twenty twenty-five Fruit of Housing Authority budget. With a supplemental approche appropriation of funds for the Headwater Housing Project and, uh. Our Fruit of Housing Authority Executive Director, Shannon Vossen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and the rest of the Board of Commissioners for the Fruit of Housing Authority for the opportunity to present. Uh, the supplemental budget amendment before you, uh, transfers four hundred thousand dollars in funds from the Economic Development Fund from the City of Fruta. Uh, to be used for a potential contribution to the Headwaters, uh, project, which is a redevelopment project of the existing Oaks facility. Off Oddly Avenue. Um, this is funded through two ways. Three hundred twenty-five thousand of it is through, uh, lodging tax dollars that were approved. In twenty twenty by voters, they authorized a variety of uses for these lodging tax dollars, but we have used it for, uh, housing, economic development, public places in the past. So three hundred twenty-five thousand is, uh, used from those lodging tax dollars. And the remaining seventy-five is from American Rescue Plan, uh, dollars that the city received, uh, during the COVID pandemic. Um, so this contribution will be made to, uh, restrict all units at the Oaks, uh, at a hundred percent of the area median income. Um, this is something that council has been working on for several months, uh, something, uh, a project that we're very, uh, excited about that we've been working with, uh, Headwaters, but also Family Health West. On as well to really try to address a need for affordable and attainable housing, um, in Fruta. So staff recommends approval of this budget amendment, and I'll just caveat it with, um, this just approves the transfer of funds of formal development agreement. Uh, will come before council in the future, and we have a lot of protections on these funds as well, which are special counsel, counsel. Uh, Dalton Kelly will explain the next agenda item, but I'll defer there to public comment and I happy to answer any questions after that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Shannon. With that, would like, excuse me, would like to open it up for public comment. Excuse me, once again, with that, uh, I ask that everybody, even if you spoke before, this is a Housing Authority meeting, please come up, state your full name and address, and once again, you have three minutes. Oh, please come on up.
Paul Schultz, Red Rock Subdivision. We, the taxpayers of Fruta, strongly oppose the approval of Resolution twenty-five oh one and oh two, which commits a staggering eight hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer funds to two entities. That share the exact same physical Aspen address. This raises serious concerns about transparency, financial accountability, and potential misuse of public funds. Wise Fruta sending eight hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer funds to two LLCs that appear to be the same entity. Who are the actual owners of Headwaters Housing Partner LLC and eight oh five Ottley Avenue LLC? Why was eight oh five Ottley Avenue LLC created just months ago seemingly, seemingly to receive this loan? Why are ARPA and lodging tax funds? Being diverted to subsidize a private developer? What guarantees exist that Fruta taxpayers will ever see a return on this investment? We urge City Council to halt the approval of these resolutions until full transparency is provided, including disclosure of ownership. And financial interests of both LLCs at the same Aspen address, independent legal and financial review of this deal. And strong taxpayer protections and oversight to ensure accountability. Fruta taxpayers deserve honest governance and fiscal responsibility. We demand answers before our money's given away. To these entities. Do not approve these resolutions without full disclosure. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And bring it back to council. Or any questions, uh, or conversations, and we can obviously ask Shannon anything at this point in time as well. So. I'll bring it back to you guys.
And can we get some clarification on what the fiscal impact the city will be?
Yeah, so, um, as of this resolution before you only appropriates the funds. Um, so these funds are already included in the twenty twenty-five budget for use. Um, but yeah, for the first year, it will be, uh, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the, uh, Oaks redevelopment. Again, out of the four hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-five is lodging tax dollars that were approved specifically by the voters in twenty twenty-four housing. Uh, through the economic development, uh, portion of that. Seventy-five is through the American Rescue Plan dollars, which were federal dollars that we received. Uh, through the federal government during the pandemic, which can be used for a variety of different purposes. But after we spent the rest of our American Rescue Plan allocation, um. Sorry, Paul. Uh, after we spent the, uh, our American Rescue Plan allocation on sewer and broadband and other eligible uses, we had this leftover, so that's why we're trying to appropriate it for this use. Um, there are a ton of protections for these funds. They eventually, uh, are loaned out, uh, to the entity, and once construction is done, then if we become equity partners, the Housing Authority. Becomes equity partners in the project. So that will all be explained in the next resolution. We do have our special counsel on too, if you want to add anything to that, Dalton.
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of hard to talk about these items kind of in silos because they are related, um, Dalton Kelly, Butler Snow. So the resolution before the Board of Commissioners right now is just the appropriation of the four hundred thousand dollars. The second resolution relates to the actual mechanism for how the funds go into, uh, the essentially partnership here and how they're secured. So eight oh five Ottley Avenue is a single purpose entity that the Fruit of Housing Authority is a limited member in. The Fruit of Housing Authority approved a resolution last, I believe, November to be a special limited partner in that LLC. Um, in order to help, um, achieve certain AMI restrictions in these units. The four hundred thousand dollar contribution again is the only thing being looked at tonight. Any future contribution would be come before the City Council. And those details on, um, if and when those contributions would be made, how they're secured would come before the City Council later. Um, really, all we're talking about tonight is an upfront contribution for the purchase of the property. Um, given that right now, the whole reason the Fruit of Housing Authority is considering that is for, um, AMI restrictions on the property. The four hundred thousand dollars is secured by a promissory note delivered by the entity to, uh, the Housing Authority, um, upon receipt of the funds. It's also secured by a deed of trust, which is in first lien position on the property. And if the, um, if the project doesn't move forward as, um, planned, um, the Fruit of Housing Authority would have the ability to foreclose on that lien and get its money back. And so it, this money is secured just like a home mortgage is. Ultimately, there is that lien right, and you can get your money back. As Shannon mentioned, um, the, the plan for this money is it would be appropriated. It's going to, um, help with the land purchase. And then ultimately what that does is help reduce the amount for the construction costs and overall borrowing. So that the units can be offered at less than market rate. In order to achieve less than market rate rents, there has to be some sort of influx of cash. Given the money on the front end for the purchase price allows the developing entity to borrow less funds at market rate. And so that is why the funds are being asked for now in the contribution towards the land purchase. Um, I think that covers the high level of kind of structure and what's going on, but if there's any questions, um, feel free to ask, happy to answer.
Yeah, and the benefit is we make this contribution, everything goes well with construction, we become equity partners. All of the units are, uh, available at a hundred percent of area median income. So people who want to live. And work in Fruta will have opportunities, uh, to do so through these units.
So Shannon, you said all of them will be available at a hundred percent is.
Up to a hundred percent, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, the dollar amount we're.
Uh, four hundred thousand this year. Um, there, uh, was a term sheet approved that we could go up to eight hundred thousand, but all that will be subject to annual appropriation by the Fruit of City Council each budget year. So four hundred and then potentially, uh, a hundred each year after that of, uh, lodging tax dollars or other funds that, uh, people could, or you could see fit for that.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I think this is a great opportunity for our community. Yes, we're, we're spending funds with, um, a developer, but that is, as been stated, to get these rents of, it was sixty-two units, right? Um, to be, to hold their, restrict the rents to be from, uh, higher market. As we all know, uh. The market prices on housing has gone up significantly the last ten years. And so this enables people to be that qualified to be able to be in our community. Uh, and so I think it's a very, um. It's a great asset that we have and that we can partner with, and I think another value that we have with, um, us directly partnering with the developer and not doing what we, um. Did with the Muse is that we get to have our own restrictions. We don't have to be bound by any state or federal laws. This is all local. So this is. What I think is wisely used funds to be able to negotiate and have housing to help our community directly. We. Directly impact how this is being used. Um, so I think it's fantastic. Uh. Staff, do, are we going to have a website or anything that people can, just like nineteen road, that they can go out and grab information about this at some point? They can kind of get a more, um, holistic.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's already on our planning page and our current development project, so people can see all of the planning documents that was submitted. So site plan, design. Um, conceptual designs, all of that as well, but we could post a separate one, just like we did, uh, for some of our other projects and also the Fruit of Muse as well.
But last point is, so this, this four hundred thousand dollars is currently restricted use funds.
It is.
General use funds.
No, it is. So the three hundred twenty-five are restricted for, um, uses that were approved by the voters. Um, so these are just lodging tax dollars. So when someone comes and stays in Fruta for less than thirty days, they pay a three percent tax. On that, uh, overnight stay. So these are dollars that have been paid by people, um, visiting the area, uh, for the most part, and yeah, they are restricted to really two purposes. Uh, economic development and public places, and within that economic development, they can be used for attainable housing. So. We cannot use these dollars for our general core services like police, uh, parks, or weekend for the public places, but, uh, roads, bridges. These are reserved for those specific uses. Yeah, thank you.
Just to reiterate, that was approved by.
Uh, the voters. Yep, yep, yep. There was a, a Tabor question in twenty twenty, um, that can we raise or add an additional three percent lodging tax to our existing three percent, and that was approved. Uh, I think it was fifty-nine percent overall.
But one tale on that, just real quick. And it also, that goes towards the mandated amount that we knew been, uh, dictated from the state that we need to attain.
Yeah, yeah, for the prop one, one, two, three dollars, yeah, which is a grant program that the state, um, can offer funds for housing, but we, there's, uh, specific numbers. That we have to provide as a community. So between the fifty units from the Muse and some of these other projects, it's, uh, we're definitely taking a big chunk out of it, hopefully.
Thank you.
That answered.
Okay. I just want to kind of say, I, I want to thank people that stick around and kind of for these discussions. Um, you know, as we listen to feedback and then we asked questions for clarifications before we move forward, I do appreciate. Uh, those of us or those of you that are here and kind of listening to all the information. So thank you very much. All right. That, any other questions, comments, or discussions on FHA twenty twenty-five dash zero one? Skipping. All right, with that, um, would ask for a motion for the, from the commissioners.
I move to adopt Resolution FHA twenty twenty-five dash zero one, amending the twenty twenty-five Fruit of Housing Authority budget with a supplemental appropriate appropriation of funds for the Headwaters Housing Partners Project.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second. Any additional questions, comments? From commissioners? I still got to get the name right. All right, Deb, with that, would you please poll the commissioners?
Commissioner Parrish.
Yes.
Commissioner Downs. Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Hancy.
Yes.
Commissioner Perser. Motion passes six zero.
Right. Thank you. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh two. Resolution of the Fruit of Housing Authority concerning a loan to eight oh five Ottley Avenue LLC for the acquisition of property. To serve as the site of the Oaks Project. Spends special counsel into the Housing Authority, Dalton Kelly.
All right, and so this is the second of the resolutions, and this resolution is the specific, uh, resolution for loaning the funds to. Uh, eight oh five Ottley Avenue LLC. Um, just to recap, uh, we are looking at sixty-two units of multifamily rental housing. And it will serve a mix of people up to one hundred percent area median income. Um, that is a cap. There will be, um, additional terms within the land use restriction agreement that would give the city the ability to, um, buy that down in the future if you wanted to lower those AMI caps. But right now, what we're talking about is a one hundred, um, percent, um, and that would be the maximum. Um, what the resolution does tonight is it authorizes the loan of the funds to the, to the LLC. That loan would convert to equity upon the, the LLC, um, closing on its construction loan. And so the, the design of this is, um, the funds are secured by the promissory note and the deed of trust. Until this project gets to where it satisfies the contingencies of, we've executed the redevelopment agreement, we've executed the land use agreement. And they've secured their construction funding so that we know the project is going forward. At that point, that is when the funds, the loan funds convert to equity. And the deed of trust is, uh, released and the promissory note, um, would be, um, canceled at that point. The reason for the trigger being at that construction close is their construction lender is going to want to be, take that first lien position on this. And so at that point, we would have the land use restriction, which is the, our real benefit of the bargain here is getting the units restricted, constructed and restricted. And so. Um, until that point happens, your funds are being secured by this promissory note and the deed of trust. The deed of trust gives you the ability to foreclose on the property. Um, if we're not moving forward, those triggers would be set for, or set forth in the deed of trust. And, and really that, um, the triggers are, um, the big trigger is, um, they're. They just don't get it done in enough time, and we got to move forward on this and do something else. That's kind of the outside date. Um, on the promissory note, and that's what triggers the deed of trust. Um, but ultimately, um, this is set up to be more or less a temporary mechanism to secure your funds until the construction loan. Is closed and we have the redevelopment agreement executed and that land use restriction agreement executed. Both of those agreements will come before the Fruit of Housing Authority, um, for consideration and execution, and so those terms are, um. Are still to be agreed to. We do have a term sheet, and so we know what those core, core terms are going to be. The Fruit of Housing Authority has approved that term sheet, and so we are in basic agreement on, on what the terms are going to be, and so this isn't. Like we're throwing the funds out there without kind of knowing what the deal is going to be. Um, but they, they are secured by that deed of trust and that promissory note. Um, I, I'll pause there, um, and take any questions.
Well, first, Shannon, is there anything you'd like to?
No.
All right, add to that. And so at this point in time, we're going to open it up to public comments. So, uh, is there anybody here that would like to make a comment on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh two? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and then bring it back to council. All right.
I just want to say, like, I'm really excited about this project. I think, you know, it's a great step moving forward that the citizens of Fruta, um, deemed. A project like this as a top priority and to be able to come together and find a good space in our town, um, in our city. And, um, and just be able to move forward with something that is going to help people work and live in Fruta. It's a super exciting moment for us.
Sorry, Commissioner. So we got to get. All straight while we jump between meetings. Anybody else have anything that they'd like to add at this time?
Yeah, I have a, a few comments. Uh, some may be reiterating this from last time, but, um. I, I think it's just fair to communicate, like, we've evaluated this project for many, many months. And we fought hard for the, we, we were approached with this opportunity. And we really planned and strategized to have the best, uh, product or best relationship with them. So that we could have a, a fantastic product for our community that they can have. Um. We didn't take this lightly. I know there were many, like, we had some lengthy discussions and they were all in public meetings. All of it's out there. It's probably out on YouTube, um, with our meetings that we, we, uh, had some, uh, lively discussions with them. And I think we were at a really good point, um, as we were finalizing these, uh, contracts. Um, to really get a good product for our community, as it's been stated, uh. We will have sixty-two additional units, so now a hundred and twelve units in our community that are, our rent rates are restricted to, uh, income levels. Uh, and that helps to allow folks to live in our community. We don't want to, um. We, we want to have everybody that. we we want to have everybody that wants to be here, live here, and this sure helps um the population.
Aaron, can I just jump in on that?
Yeah, go for it.
Which is just to reiterate that this is comes from when we back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when we did the community survey, where we heard from four over four thousand residents here that this was a priority or should be a priority for the city. So this is not something that's happened overnight. I mean, this has been a process to get us here, but it stemmed from listening to our community.
And that's why the housing authority has been created so we can facilitate certain types of um housing uh transactions. Um, and I really like what we've been able to produce that we have an equity position in the in the transaction that we're not just giving the loan out, that we are really looking to get the bank for our buck, that we're really getting some great products with limited risk as where it could have been. Um, I think we've done a really good job with that. Um, and uh, I think our community is going to be blessed for this, and I think there's a lot of communities that are envious of what we've been able to accomplish in short form. Um, our community is just under fourteen thousand, and with like nine thousand um uh units, houses and and all that.
Just over five.
Oh, five thousand, even better. Um, like, so we had just over five thousand housing units in our community, and we have a hundred and twelve uh units that are special. And I think that's great for our community. The community spoke, as what the mayor said, and we're able to get this and bring this to pass within really short form. I know it's been a few years, but I think it's uh um a great success in in our community. Thank you.
Um, also, a point of clarification. Uh, just to make sure I understand this correctly, we are not using any general fund dollars for this project.
No.
That's not something very many communities can ever say that we now have two projects. Uh, assuming this one goes forward as it's planned, that'll be a hundred and twelve units without any general fund dollars.
With local control.
Yes.
Like that, that's a huge win for me that we get to be the ones to decide when and, you know, where and how the those are allocated. We've oh, Fruta's always been a community that takes care of its own, and I'm proud to continue that, that we get to be, get to continue to be that that city that takes care of its own people. We're we're providing housing for our workforce. A lot of our workforce has been priced out of Fruta. I, every single day, I know you guys, I say it all the time, but I I hear it every single day from young people who want to live in Fruta, and it's just not a reality right now. Um, and this is, sorry. This is a good step forward.
And I would only like to compliment staff for the thoroughness of protecting the interests of Fruta in this contract and the terms um with this developer. It's been just great to hear and to learn of those uh steps, those things that have been put in place. So thank you very much.
I like to just add one thing. It made me think of something, Amy, is that what's the demand is there. Those fifty units at the muse is they're full. So clearly, there's demand for this um housing, and I'm we're grateful that we can add another uh option for our community, and we'll probably see it fill up when it's done, too. It's highly needed.
Anything else from?
Just a quick clerical error. Um, the first paragraph in the body of the resolution for just spelled wrong. We might want to fix that before we sign it.
Good catch.
Well, we chant F F F R U.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, uh, we would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I uh would move, oh, I apologize.
I'm not sure what the title is.
Fair.
Here.
Mister Chair, I move to approve reslee- resolution FHA two zero two five dash zero two, a resolution of the Fruta Housing Authority concerning a loan to eight zero five Ottley Avenue LLC for the acquisition of property to serve as the site of the Oaks project.
First, a second, any other? Any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right, hearing none.
Commissioner Downs.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hansi.
Yes.
Commissioner Purser.
Yes.
Commissioner Parish.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Dalton, once again, thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you, Dalton.
I appreciate the kind of time and effort that went into making sure all those protections were there.
Absolutely, thank you.
Uh, with that, uh, I think I need a motion to adjourn from the fruit of housing and then go back into our open city council meeting.
Moved.
Second. You gotta be quicker.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hansi.
Yes.
Commissioner Purser. Commissioner Parish.
Yes.
Commissioner Downs.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Very much with that, we're going to move back into our uh Fruta, open Fruta City Council regular meeting, and we have item ten on the agenda, which is ordinance twenty twenty-five. It's a I'm a little confused by this because I don't think this is a second reading because last time we did a continuance. So this is a continuance of the first reading.
Last time was the second reading for public hearing, so we continued the second reading.
Continuing, so the second reading.
Yep. Uh, so the staff recommendation before you tonight is to continue the second reading again to March fourth of uh twenty twenty-five. Um, whenever you adopt uh um a code by reference, there are extra public hearing requirements that you have to meet specifically. Um, you have to post before it goes to first reading. You have to post in between the first and the second reading, and you have to post uh after the second reading after approval. Uh, so we just missed uh the second posting, so we want to continue this public hearing to March fourth to allow for adequate public notice uh as is required um by the statute uh requirements for adopting something by reference. So staff recommendation is just that, uh, continue ordinance, uh, I believe it's twenty twenty-five oh two uh to the March fourth uh twenty twenty-five public hearing.
So at that point, so any questions or concerns that we have on?
Yes.
Because if you didn't quite have the right public notice, we should push back.
Yes.
Discuss.
Yep.
Upper notification.
Yep.
Gotcha.
We'll we'll get it done sometime.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Want to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's.
We have ample time to discuss. Um, we saw that what staff came back with, and I think there was still wants to be some more discussion on that.
Mister Mayor, I move to continue ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two. This shouldn't be oh two then. Should it be?
No, it's only two.
It is.
Okay. Twenty, oh, yeah, twenty twenty-five oh two to March fourth, two thousand twenty-five public hearing.
Right, first.
Second.
Henry gets that one.
I'm slow tonight.
All right. Deb, would you kindly poll council?
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hansi.
Yes.
Commissioner Purser, Commissioner Parish.
Yes.
Commissioner Downs, Commissioner Miller, motion passes six zero.
Thank you. With that, um, this this is the official official first city managers' report for you.
I'm not sure. I think last time might have been the official official. I'm not sure.
Wasn't signed.
Hmm.
So I think this is your official first. So let's just call it your first official.
Great, great. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off on a high note and talk about uh filter. As our planning and development director called it Christmas in January. Uh, so uh, great news. So last week, we were notified that we have access to fifty thousand uh cubic yards of fill materials for the launch project. Um, this is coming from the Pinnacle Ridge filings in the Redlands, and uh Dan, uh Gavin and I will be meeting uh this week to discuss, you know, uh how we can get the filter to the launch and what it will potentially cost. Um, we are in possession of a SOAS report. Looks like it's a good match. So this is almost half of what we need to fill the rest of the site. So the actual, yeah, yeah.
Christmas.
Yeah.
Five to two.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So fifty out of a hundred and twenty-six thousand cubic yards total. So um we'll come back once we learn some more. There could be some costs. Um, if we want to get this done as soon, which we probably do, um, but we'll bring that back to council at a later date.
Hey, Shannon, before you move on from that, how did this happen?
Uh, developer reached out to staff and.
Oh, turn over to Dan. Um, so Pinnacle, Dan Karras, Planning Director for the City of Fruta, uh, as a part of the Pinnacle Ridge filing three and four, they have to move a bunch of material in order to get the roads and infrastructure in. And so they're essentially requesting uh that we participate in removing that so they can.
All right, yeah, very excited.
It's great.
Yeah, yeah. Um, few other quick updates, uh, you probably saw. So uh per direction of the council from our last meeting, we put out a comment on the stereo recycling plant, which is currently making its way through the Mesa County conditional use permit process. Um, so statement has been out. I went ahead and called the county administrator Todd and just gave him a heads up um that we will be putting out the statement and we uh sent it out or can send it out to council. If you are receiving emails, we can reply back uh with that specific prompt. Um, mayor has already been responding back to a few, and we're sending all those comments uh to Mesa County. And as we as it gets scheduled, as it goes through the process, uh, staff will work on a letter from uh to be approved by city council uh specifically regarding the application and it's um uh how it relates to the uh requirements of the conditional use permit that we'll be able to provide to uh the Mesa County uh Planning Commission, also their Board of County Commissioners. Uh, three other quick things. Uh, we are hosting business after hours uh next Thursday at the Community Center. Uh, free to attend. I believe it starts at five thirty. Um, so we will be hosting that. We're getting trail blazer pizza. Yep, yep. So uh should be good. Um, and yeah, that's a partnership with the chamber, so we provide the food, they provide the drinks. It's just an opportunity uh to meet chamber members, but also members of the public as well. Uh, and then two quick things, parking lot that we purchased off North Mulberry Street. Um, it will probably be closed next week for some minor improvements. Um, so we've been, our public work staff and our planning staff have been getting together uh to look at uh grade, uh drainage issues, stuff like that. So whether it's next week or the week after, we definitely didn't want to close it this week with how nice it was. Um, we'll be doing a short closure on that to add some road base, fix draining issues and do some grading as well. And then finally, um, I have re- request, go ahead.
Like I imagining that won't be over like a Friday.
No.
Like, not a weekend.
No, it'll be our public works crews uh doing, I think, most of the work, so they'll probably be doing it like during the week. Yeah, yeah. Um, and finally, I do want to put a hold on your calendar. So uh next, before our next week meeting, we have that workshop that we generally hold for. Uh, I did request uh to see if the school district would be willing to give council a tour of the Fruta Middle School. Uh, prior to that, I haven't heard back from Clint yet. I believe he's out sick, uh, but we're hoping that date works. If not, we'll probably send you a doodle poll uh with some of their availability afterwards, but hopefully we can meet uh five thirty before our next meeting.
Also, we'll also invite some other.
Yep, staff, yep, yep, and community partners. Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And that'd be February nineteenth?
That'd be February eighteenth, eighteen. Let me double check. Yep, before our next meeting. Yeah. If not, we'll send out the dates that they provided, and uh we can pick from there. That's it, Mister Mayor, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Aaron, I'm actually going to jump to you first because I know you putting you on the spot.
Yeah.
I thought you had something about something that Shannon said.
Yes.
Daggers here, but.
No, no, that's fine. Um, I do have a few items after that, uh, but the first one is I had an opportunity to speak to the owner of uh the property on nineteen and M area.
Sure.
About that recycling plant. Um, I had a really good discussion. He he knows that there's a lot of concerns out there, and he wants to address each and every one. Um, and so I think it's, so there is going to be an informational meeting um that they're going to invite uh community leadership and the community to come to so they they can address that. So they'll, I would assume they'll be putting that out here as soon as they can. It's not, I think it's still going to be a few weeks out, but but I think it's just uh it'll be great as as a council, we can be good examples for our community to not jump the gun on on um a pin, like, we can have, I think, it's, of course, it's fine to have opinions, but I think it's, I think it's an opportunity that we can, like, we've had this experience with nineteen. I think it's just, we need to make sure that we have good facts as we as we go through it, not just uh preemptively um say it's something that we like or hate.
Right.
Um, as we see how the chat, how there's challenges from that. So uh that will be a a, I'm glad I ran into him and was able to have a good chat with him. Um, so uh because there's a lot of bad information out there on it, and we'll get further information as well. Um, let's see.
Can always come back to you.
Yeah, um, I'm, I think I've got everything here. Um, just had a Parks and Rec meeting last night. Um, just a couple fun things. Um, pickleball court's going very well. Um, shade structures are coming in soon.
Well, heading today is.
Ford is still going forward. The operations of the rec center might be limited. Electricity being.
Oh, the.
Yeah, so um, but I think that's going well. Uh, so we'll see that in the coming, well, they'll give us dates soon, but it's going quite well. Um, we were awarded a six thousand dollar grant um for putting trees in our community, and so um, we, the Parks and Rec is looking to um manage a tree planting uh event in, it's going to be done the the week of Arbor Day, but it'll be Saturday, the twenty-sixth of April. So we're going to be buying fifty trees, and uh I think they're going to be cutting much to put down in Snooks Bottom. So uh, it'll be a great uh opportunity to be, it's working out perfect timing with Arbor Day and Earth Day as well. So um next week, we'll be planning um or next month, we'll be planning the more details and and inviting out, but I know there's already people that have reached out uh for uh some volunteer.
Can we try to get some kids involved with that as much as possible?
Oh, yes, that was brought up last night as well to get uh the schools involved. The comp is it's, I think it's an opportunity to plant fifty trees in like a half hour. If we get a lot of people out there.
Uh, that'd be awesome.
Um, and then also because of our good weather, uh, that trail on the south side of Snooks is going to
Oh, yeah.
Here this week.
Yeah, our crews are working on it, yeah.
Yeah, so they'll be done. They're hoping to be done by the end of this week. So that was kind of a nice surprise. It's not waiting till summer. They took advantage of uh because the weather's done so well, they got other tasks completed that they had some availability to uh crank this out. And because of that, um, we're doing it in-house instead of um contracting it out, so the funds are going even further.
Right.
Um, so they're going to be doing improvements to the parking lot to make it a little bit safer, and uh I think they're trying to add different materials and then spray it so it um when people illegally do donuts out there, that it doesn't spray rocks as easy. I have a broken window because of that. Um, so it'll be nice. So because of that, we get the the parking lot's going to be improved. So the those are some really good things there. Um, just some side notes, uh, just it's just to me, it's fun administrative. Yeah, issues. Uh, our uh city charter calls it the Parks and Rec Commission. We have no documents on why it's called the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So they're working on that, and come to find out with it. Uh, we have a tree board that's been disbanded since the nineties or early two thousand, or early two thousands, I think. And and so they're, they're like, look, their um staff is looking at um correcting some things and being, and then how do we want to integrate uh the tree board? So it's kind of interesting how it popped up as we're, you know, fifty trees to plant, but
Yeah.
Just kind of funny how uh we don't know how the name changed, just changed at some point in the nineties or early two thousands and in folks that we can talk to historically, uh prior Parks and Rec directors and um and stuff that, like, I don't know. Anyway, it was just kind of a funny thing. But anyway, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Amy?
Um, I had a historic preservation meeting was yesterday. We had, I, that's just such a great group. And our lovely Tessa Inum was actually um at that meeting. She brought us some really cool old newspaper papers and um, yeah, some really neat documents um that hopefully our history room can use.
Like, how old?
Like nineteen twenty-seven?
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was pretty cool. She also presented um an idea for our uh for our board to consider, which everybody was very excited about, more hopefully to come on that soon. Um, I would like you guys to put Saturday, May third on your calendars. I um I'm on, as you know, the the Community Food Bank Board, and we are doing a big fundraiser. Um, dancing with Western Slope Stars and. Dancing with Western Slope Stars and ironically, weirdly, I have no idea why I, they've asked me to be one of the performers. So if you will plan on coming and supporting me for that, I would appreciate that. More to come on that too. But if you'll just put a placeholder, it's Saturday, Saturday, May 3rd at 6:30. Yes. Oh, thank God, not in the morning. Yeah. I would have immediately turned that invitation down. Yeah. And then I also wanted to thank you guys for the attending the White Iced event. That was a whole lot of fun spending that time and supporting our District 51 Foundation. They do a lot of good in our community and our schools. So I really appreciated you guys getting on board and dressing in your lovely white and gold and being there. That was fun. And I think that's all I have.
I had two people come up to me and say how pleased they were that Fruita was so well represented at that event and Fruita represented more than any other community.
Go Fruita. Go us. Yeah. And we, it wasn't just council. We had, we had staff and it was really fun to see.
Yeah, Dan's not here, so.
Yeah. Where did Dan go? He was.
There you go.
And my husband's top hat was a huge. It was just a fun night. I really appreciate you guys jumping on board and supporting.
Except we did never make the mayor meet new.
We did. Yes, we absolutely did. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Okay.
Did happen.
All right. Did you get a grilled cheese on the way out? Is that? Yeah.
I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Well, I had a conflict for that night, but I was very pleased to see a couple of the photos that I saw that evening. I wanted to double check about the Oedit conference email that I sent out and there's still time, still time for questions and like confirmation and everything, but.
Which may also be May 3rd, right? You know, it's May 2nd or May 3rd.
It could be May 1st or 2nd.
Oh, May 1st or 2nd.
Yep. Okay. All right. Yep. So let it percolate. See if you are feeling it and kind of a.
Oh yeah, I don't.
I need to perk.
I don't need to perk either. No, yeah, we're good. I was.
You know what's going to happen is that depending on who can participate, it's going to change how this panel goes. And I think this will be super dynamic and really cool and very, very fruta and very.
No, I'm excited about it.
Something that they'll moderate or that we're supposed to moderate. Do we know that format yet?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be.
So we self moderate?
We do.
Some or all of us.
It'd be great if all of us were involved. It's, yeah.
It's nice that we all get, because I know sometimes we can get heavy handed if we all show up. Menu that we can.
The Office of Economic Development and we get to show up for this. Yeah. I think it'd be cool if we all could show up and.
The idea is like, we'd have a timeframe that was just for us.
Yes. 90 minutes for us to talk about Fruita and to talk about how we do things. And I think it.
So in a first self moderating, we'll just kind of have topics ahead.
Yeah. And that, that registration process, it said that we would each need to do that. So is that something that, that you'll like keep us on track for?
I suppose, yeah.
Okay. Is that open?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Open.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was.
Valentine's Day, actually.
Okay. So when do you do that?
My, my preference would be that we all like, I'll put out some ideas, but if we can all just be on the same page about it, it'd be a million times.
For sure.
We'll need to do.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. Yeah.
Test rehearsals and some jazz. No jazz hands.
I think it's fair to ask staff to help too. You don't.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So fun. Yeah. Okay.
If you have any call, please try and make it May 1st. That weekend is my granddaughter's graduation from college in Denver, Metro State. So.
Oh, wow. Nice.
Like to be a part of it, but.
Family first.
Family first.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Way to work unicorn.
Thank you. Two things, unicorn and magic.
Yeah. Yeah, you didn't know that was, your proposal was lovely.
Thank you. It should be good. No, I'm good.
Other than to say I, for an event and non-social kind of person that I am, the ice white was a very enjoyable evening. My wife was pleased and I enjoyed my time there.
We never saw the selfie stick photo.
Yes.
You need to send us some of those photos.
I would say it was very nice to spend some time with your wife. She was absolutely adorable. She was very pleasant to talk to.
She was a lot of fun.
Yeah, please do. My wife thought that as well. She was adorable.
That's no.
So it was my first time being at the Y Iced event too, and it was super fun. Yeah. So I'm so glad that we, that so many of us got, were able to go like that. It worked out and it was great. I always, I know we had spent a lot of time earlier in January all together and, but I'm, I never shy away from hanging out with you guys. So love it. So it was fantastic. I got so many great comments. This is for everybody, everyone about the winter concert.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. How perfect and amazing and how great the pick of musicians were for our community as well as how great the space, what all of, just all of the things, just.
Linkes, the.
Just everything. It just.
We, we did cause the, the poor fire marshals, maybe his little veins in his forehead might've been popping a little bit. Cause I was standing there and I, and he was, he's leaning up against the wall and I'm, hey, Travis, how's it going? Cause it's, it's okay. I'm like, what's going on? He's like, yeah, this is a lot of big people in here.
Yeah. Yeah. So it was just.
Yeah, right.
Wild success. Like it was so great. So thanks to everybody.
So do we need to do next year?
It was.
The weather was fantastic.
The weather was nice. Oddly enough, it was something that people commented that it's a regular thing. And I had to tell them, I go, no, this is a special event that we've just done for the second time. But the comment was being made that this was a regular thing, that Fruita, that Fruita does. Like they just expect Fruita to do these types of things, I guess.
But then probably as you go through the budgetary process for next year, we should look at possibly increasing the number of these.
Yep.
I heard similar things. It's nice that this is just kind of a Fruita, for Fruita event. I also was a little nerdy and walked and counted the cars in the parking lot. And it was dark, so it's not a perfect count, but it was between 36 and 38.
Wow.
Wow. In that parking lot.
That's great.
So I think once it kind of gets.
Was full by the time we got there.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was very well utilized. It was.
Oh, yeah.
And it, no one complained about a lack of.
No, and.
No, at all.
Really good job of how they parked too, because I was a little bit nervous when I saw how full it was. And we did a quick, a quick walkthrough too. And I was like, oh, hey, good job, guys.
It's going to get worked on and.
Yeah.
It was heavily utilized.
And it, it is. I mean, you know, you guys know that I live right back up against that and it is utilized every weekend. Like it is like Thursday through Saturday, just.
I do wonder that when we get closer to summer, as we do move the farmer's market and stuff down, we might want to do something to attract some parking to the new parking lot that we have as well. Cause I don't know that how many people are really going to realize that that one's accessible one too. So maybe if we kind of get ahead of that a little bit to think about.
The chamber, because that's.
Well, just in general, overall, but yes, but knowing that this one's already being so successful.
Absolutely.
And I don't even know if people really even realize that one's been done.
I think that made a big conversation with the chamber, which is that the vendors, can you encourage?
Oh, there you go. Sure.
There and not.
Right.
Right next to it.
That's smart. Yeah.
Great.
And I'll bring that up at the next meeting.
Maybe we have a guy that's on that that can talk to him about that.
Yeah. And we do have some, sorry, I was going to say we do have some new signage too, though.
Oh, good.
Public parking down there. Yeah.
Might be a good frequently asked question to.
Oh, yeah, that'd be a great one. Yeah.
Public parking.
Oh, yeah. Downtown. Yeah.
Maybe the heading of oversized parking.
Right.
We've had that issue that we've addressed fairly well. It seems like it's kind of how we use the civic center for that more. And then the other ones are kind of designated. Maybe if we have that.
Yeah.
Put it in there, but those are, that's a great idea.
Awesome. Yeah, great.
The Fruita Youth in Action Council, they just, I know every time I tell you like, they're just everywhere, like anything that you see the events happening through the Parks and Rec, like there, these kids are volunteering, like they're volunteering for the 5K.
Oh, Sweetheart Run. Yeah.
Yeah, Sweetheart Run and they're volunteering for the senior prom and like every, all the things. They're just highly involved and I don't even know how, they do other things besides just that. I'm not quite sure how they find it. Through all the things, they're very, very energetic, but they're great. And they're going to come talk to us March 4th, I believe.
Oh, good.
Jimmy, what's the age groups of that?
It is middle school and high school.
Cause I was thinking it might be neat to have, to talk to Emily and let her kids know that that's kind of a next step and stone for those kids.
Yeah, that's a good.
Especially those just.
Yeah.
Cause they were here. Yep.
They're definitely minded that way and that probably want to be involved.
Actually, there's, I actually reach out to Miranda too, just to see, I don't, I think sixth graders are able to participate, but, because they're starting their recruitment right now for next. So like that's, that's a big push that they're. Yeah. I want to say that I always appreciate when people come and participate in our meetings. Like I'm, you know, like the tonight, there's a lot of there and any night, I just always, always appreciate it regardless of, if, if it's very difficult things to hear. I this council, because we never shy away and we always are encouraging people to come and and it was pretty difficult. And like, I mean, I feel sad. And I know like in general feelings are different than how we deal with facts and how we do other things. And so that's separate and I feel super confident in how everything has been handled and communicated. Nevertheless, I've mentioned this a couple of times, there clearly could be room for more, like more outreach, more engagement. And I really would, there's like, there was like, so tonight I heard separate things, like kind of different than what I have been hearing that, that go in pretty different directions, actually, not all in just one vein. And I, I still, I, I would like it sometime, not specific to 19 road, but just in general. And I know we have the great video with Dan speaking. But I, I would like something more like a town hall or something where we can actually have open conversation first with like present, this is how annexation works in our city. The city doesn't go out and annex. Land, well, we don't do it. Like annexation happens directed by the landowner coming to.
So that's kind of funny because Dan and I were, we, we had a very in-depth conversation about that because I've been concerned about the same things and some things too, that I've been hearing in my industry and how I'm realizing like a lot of, you know, realtors don't even know how these things work and they're giving their, you know, clients poor advice or not, you know, not helping them to know exactly what they're buying and where. And so, you know, I, I was hoping to maybe offer some, you know, educational opportunities. You know, I, I specifically asked him, you know, if he thought it might be a good idea for we, we have classes at Jujar, at our Realtors Association. And, you know, I was like, I, I would love to see something put together a quick, like 45 minute to an hour class, you know, that here's what this looks like. And here's why, and here's how. And then that can be morphed into, you know, I, I, that was a priority for, for, you know, this year at our strategic planning was, you know, more videos, more storytelling, more education and communication. So we were, yeah, I was going to request that be a workshop item.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Because I just really feel I feel like it, yeah, we can never do enough. And I even like to our neighbors, you know, like people, like people that shop and use Fruita, but our county, right? You know, that was a lot of who was represented here today. And I know that we represent citizens of Fruita. I just saying like in communication wise and engagement and like conver, actual chance to have conversation. And I know we have to be careful liability wise and things like that.
Would you be okay with asking Shannon and his team to kind of put together a concept of what that might look like? To kind of, so we're not necessarily.
Be great.
Old at a workshop.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah.
You know, Shannon, have your team kind of come back and say, we heard we want to do additional outreach and kind of community education. Here's an idea of what that.
Sure.
How you wait.
And I, and I know we have Fruita Academy, which is fantastic, but this is even outside of that.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit more, this is a little bit more.
This is a broader community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
Well, and, and Dan told me something that I did not realize that I know, you know, we know that a developer can go and have a pre-planning kind of consultation, like, hey, here's kind of what I want to do. But any citizen can do that. Like if, you know, if I'm shopping for a property in Fruita, I can go to our, you know, community development and say, hey, you know, I'm looking at this property. Can you tell me, you know, what? Yeah. And he said, oh yeah, that's a resource, you know, that we offer. And I, I had no idea. And I'm heavily, like heavily immersed in that world. And that was something, so I'm like, man, we need to, we need to get that out. Like we need to communicate to our, our community that that is a resource that we offer and that we're happy, you know, we want you to use that and engage in that. And again, like in my industry, like that would be a fantastic place to start, you know? You're the person who's leading, you know, who's leading the shot. Yeah. Who's shopping and helping people make these decisions. You know, that's a phenomenal resource.
So, yeah, I was, I, yeah, it sounds like we're all like, I just, even if you guys are good with that, we're all good with that.
You and I talked.
Talk about it. Yes.
Fantastic opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. I think, yeah. With outreach, we can definitely talk internally. I know those are a great suggestion. We've talked about like office hours with, you know, a city planner or something where anyone can come and discuss kind of really any issues on their mind. And we always try to make ourselves available for anyone who is interested, especially on 19 Road. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people as have our staff, but yeah, we can, we can definitely try to come up with something that would kind of meet those goals.
Just more specifically feeling like something that we are at.
Oh, sure.
Not where I'm not trying to put some more on you guys.
Oh, yeah.
Other than like here, like here's the, here's, here's the, yeah, yeah. Organizing like the, how this is done.
Right.
Then let's have a discussion. Like, you know, because there's comments coming to us, for example, tonight, that we're uncaring and that we don't have, you know, and I, and I know you cannot please everyone and I'm not.
Yeah.
I do. But I also know that if I was allowed to have a conversation instead of just hearing the comments and not being able to reply that we could come to a better understanding of where things actually are. And so I guess I want that opportunity to have.
I'd imagine it's frustrating for them too.
It is.
Yeah. Because you don't, you don't really feel like you're being heard.
Right.
Which believe me, you were heard and it was very, it was very uncomfortable to hear that, but it, but it's very uncomfortable to not be able to respond and not just for me, but for them.
You know, had there been something on the agenda, that's where we would have had it, which was two weeks ago. So like this, out of context at this point. But, but I had, we had, I had already been thinking about it. We, Aaron and I had talked about, I just, I, and so it's not necessarily spurred by this, but it just is a good, another reminder, like I, it's super important. And so if, if we can, and if everyone's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it would just have to be kind of generally broad. The 19 road issues, legal issues. So, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
19 road.
Oh, yeah.
Do.
Yeah, how do certain things? Yeah.
Just that.
Yep.
And then how do we decide on what roads to start to work on prior?
Basically the video only in a conversation.
And these are a lot of our frequently asked questions too. Yeah.
Property owners.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah. Property owner. I think everybody just thinks we're out there just selling everybody's land off and wanting everybody to build and that. Yeah, property owner. I think everybody just thinks we're out there just selling everybody's land off and wanting everybody to build and that. No, that's not it at all, but they just don't understand.
Does that feel comfortable?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
No, that's all.
James.
Um, no, everything that I was gonna talk about has already been talked about, so I am good.
I just wanna add one more thing, um, in light of, of, uh, public comments. And I, I really appreciate what everybody's been able to do and trying to communicate. I, I agree that to communicate more and more and it's not because we're not doing our best. It's just because it just requires so much communication, like we talked about on the survey last week, that all those options of opportu- or opportunities to communicate and it's just, it's just hard. Um, and so I, I really appreciate you bringing that up as we had a good conversation the other night. Um, I just want to just say again that, you know, I'm happy to talk with it. And I think we all are happy to talk with anybody, um, privately, uh,
Well, I did.
Further.
It didn't.
Um, to talk with everybody, because yeah, like I know it's, I think the format that we have tonight is just, it's part of being, trying to have an organized and a civ- civil, um, meeting. And then it not being a, a, a lot of the comments were directed at things that have already been completed. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to always talk with folks and, you know, it's, we always, we all know. We always talk about Fruita history and what we want to preserve and protect. And, um, so we all love this community and we're, we're only involved because we do.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Reminded me, I did, I did meet with four different residents, um, this week, but, and three of them were nineteen road, uh, specific. But the one I did meet with Amanda, who, who, um, and I would like to, if you guys are okay with adding that to.
The drain.
The drainage.
Thanks for bringing that up. I was curious.
I can't believe that I, she, I don't know how, it wasn't in my notes, because it was, um, I think she's correct. We really need to do some, um, looking into that, or at least get a report from, um, Timberland staff. Cause I know that they've been, they've been involved in that. Um, but the things, uh, we talked for an hour and a half and the.
I think it's more than just that. I think it's at a higher level.
It is.
Five, two, one.
Yep.
Dissolved.
Right.
I don't understand the vacuum like that may have created.
Yeah.
And so really, I think she was right. We need to get our.
Absolutely.
Send an email with.
Yes.
Okay, is what I.
I got it, yeah, yeah.
And are we, are we starting something to move towards that so we can get some traction on it?
Yeah, we're actually already a part of, um, the storm water management plan update with the county and City of Grand Junction, Palisade as well. But yeah, we can have, uh, public works, you know, give an update on that. But yeah, um, um, we are, we've had some efforts, but, uh, specifically for the drainage, uh, assessment. That's something we can look into and give updates on. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so Aaron, thank you for mentioning me.
Oh, yeah.
Cause that was my big one. Yeah.
Um, that's a nice segue. Uh, I know you got to ask. Being at a school about artwork, I don't know if that's happening.
Uh, not yet.
Um, but I've been asked a couple of times, is council, not as a body, but people on council, you know, would they be willing to show up at a school or this or whatever event it might be? And I've always pushed like, this is the most, this council will come and talk at any group pretty much. So, um, which I appreciate. I do want to say thank you for just, you know, saying it tonight, which is, we did not like to hear what we heard tonight, but remembering that there's the other point of views and the frustration on that side, and we need to be cognizant of that. And it's hard, you know, could we have done things differently? Maybe that would have changed a little bit, maybe. But how to look forward and how do we alleviate the things moving forward? So thank you. And that's it. I've got.
Wow.
Before you, I, just because you said that, I have to reveal that yes, I had went and talked to the school this week too.
You have to reveal.
No, I forgot. I, I went in and, and I spent an hour in, in one of the groups. Uh, do you know what that group's called?
It's all, it's also like the Fruita, it's like the.
Same kind of a thing. It's like a leaders group at the, and they, they wanted.
At high school?
Yeah, but I didn't talk about it, cause it was the workshop. But yeah, I was at the high school and I think Janine's going in to do one too. But great bunch of kids. They just had a bunch of really good questions and I didn't know what I was getting into, but I sat down and then they just asked questions and the hour went by real fast and they were great kids and questions were great.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the.
Did you do that too?
Oh, with Mrs. Crabtree.
Yeah, they're great class. Well, my daughter's in it, so I kinda liked it, but it, I mean, it was a cool class.
That was awesome. Yeah, Fruita Public Affairs. Yeah. No, it was.
Their, their questions were phenomenal. Really, really sharp kids. Yeah.
Yeah. That's awesome.
Probably speaking, was third graders. And just, there's no way to prepare for some of those questions.
Action and politics club.
Youth.
What it is.
Action and.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
That was a great class.
Very cool.
I would like to reiterate a request that I've made. It's been a few months now, but I still am not receiving any correspondence. I have to, um, about like packets. I never receive them on my city council, um, uh, email. And so I have to dig into my junk mail and my personal email and then forward them to myself. Um, I never, I don't get a lot of the calendar updates either. And so I've, I feel very frustrated by this.
Sure.
And like, uh, like a dunce, actually. So I would really like to be included.
Oh, yeah.
In that correspondence so that I don't miss another workshop or meeting, because it really made me feel, um, derelict. Last week, and that's not what I want to bring.
Is there a time that we can have you come down and maybe spend some time with them to get you locked in? Like maybe let's do that.
I can, yeah, anything that you need. I, I had, I don't, like, I feel like I'm approaching it a little bit negatively, but it really brought me a lot of.
Really feel comfortable.
Made me feel really negative. And so, and I had actually mentioned this a few months ago, but I'm somehow on a little bit of a gray area with the correspondence. And it would mean a lot to me if I was.
Oh, yeah.
Up to date.
That would mean a lot to all of us, Andrea. It's not, no, we want you in that. So really, if they could shave some time, maybe to get Andrea in there. Just spend a half an hour, forty-five minutes to get her.
Yeah.
Make sure she's good.
Yeah.
I should have, I should have followed up last week.
Oh, sure.
Um, but.
I just need some new calendar.
Yeah, that, that reminds me, actually, a lot of the calendar invites, cause I was gonna send them, uh, tomorrow's ones that Mike created. Um, so I didn't wanna just delete them without, um, uh, yeah. So, yeah, so I can, I can send updated, uh, calendar invites, uh, for all of our meetings. And I think that'd be helpful. And we'll get with our. I'm not sure if I can. You might just have to decline the old ones and it does show an organizer, but I have access to his email. I just can't edit anything with his email.
Just talk to the IT.
Oh, actually, sorry.
For November of twenty, or October twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah. Katie might be able to delete the calendar, so I'll send out new ones. And yeah, we'll get with our IT company. Sometimes we had some weird nuances, like for months of, we weren't getting emails from Montrose, the City of Montrose, which I thought was really odd. So we'll check in and, uh, make sure it gets all set up. Did you receive my emails this afternoon?
About the one-on-ones?
Yeah, yeah, and the FCC, okay.
Receive anything about this meeting and so I.
Oh, oh, okay. So it's the packet, okay.
There is a workaround, but if I, if I don't.
Yeah.
If I'm not ahead of it, then I don't.
We'll get you resubscribed and, uh, but we'll also look into it, cause they can make sure that it's actually being sent and other stuff like that. So, yeah, apologize about that.
Thank you.
All right, without it is four, nine o'clock.
Oh, my gosh.